Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting for, what is today? July 15th. Your taxes are due today if you didn't do them yet. So, welcome to our Zoom meeting. This is a little bit different for us. So, we will go through our regular agenda. However, we will not vote on items that we hear today. We will table them until the next meeting. So, the first order of business. Alvin, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Martin Cunningham.
Here.
Luca Minio.
Here.
Rico Daniele. Absent. Rosemary Moran.
Here.
Gloria Di Filippo.
Here.
Leo Florian. Absent. Jennifer McQuade.
Here.
Chelsea Troy. Absent.
Okay. The first order of business would be to accept the minutes from June 3rd of 2020. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have to do a roll call vote for the minutes, too? Alvin?
I would, just to keep everything.
All right, if you would do the roll call vote, please.
Martin Cunningham.
Here.
Luca Minio.
Here. Yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
All right. Rosemary Moran.
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo.
I'll let him know.
Yes.
Jennifer McQuade.
Yes.
Okay, that's the rule.
Alvin, I just want to let you know I'm on the phone with Leo right now. He's trying to connect to the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Alvin, would you recognize Leo as being in the meeting?
All right, recognized, thank you.
Start video. He's right there. There we are.
All right, see you, Leo.
All right, thank you, Shane.
You're welcome.
Hi, Leo. Okay, why don't we do our first petition of the night?
Okay, first item. It's a continued public hearing item, liquor license. Beer and wine package store new, location 1686 Boston Road. Petitioner OSJL Spirits LLC doing business as Ocean State Job Lot. Number 258.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any other questions?
No.
Okay. If there are no questions, I will accept a motion regarding this petition.
I move to approve it with the following conditions. Hours of operation shall be estated on the application. There shall be no onsite consumption of alcohol. The site, including all landscaped areas, shall be maintained free of all litter and debris. And four, there shall be no banners, streamers, or pennants located on the exterior of the building.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Alvin, would you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Martin Cunningham.
Yes.
Luca Minio.
Yes.
Rosemary Moran.
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo.
Yes.
Leo Florian. You gotta unmute yourself, Leo. All right, we'll come back to Leo. Jennifer McQuade.
Yes.
Okay. Leo gave thumbs up. Alvin, procedurally, was I supposed to close the meeting before we did the vote?
Well, actually, yes, I guess technically so, because you guys kept, continued the meeting from the following meeting date, so, yeah, you would have to close it.
All right, why don't we accept, I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to close.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer and Luca. I think if all those in favor, just give a thumbs up or say yes.
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 Jennifer McQuade, yes.
Sorry about that one. Okay. Alvin, if you would do the next.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, under public, yes. Under public hearings, new items under the first liquor license, we have a beer and wine package store new. Location 78 Island Pond Road. Petitioner Raj Yogi Court doing business as Murphy's Pop Shop.
Who would like to speak in favor of this petition?
I would. My name is Jennifer Milligan. I'm representing the petitioners. I believe most of them are here. I, not that I presume, so, but I believe they're here.
Having, excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing her. It sounds, is it me, or?
No, I'm having trouble, too.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, it's better.
Okay.
A little better.
I'll try to talk as loud as I can. So, I'm representing the petitioners in this, in their liquor license. We are in pursuit of the analysis that was provided in terms of, you expressed some concerns about the overall condition of the property. I'd like to note that in the past few weeks, since we've received that, they have cleaned up the debris at the property. I do have pictures to that. They are working on painting the outside of the store, and they do intend to maintain the property in a very clean state. Due to COVID-19, they have been a little bit shorthanded. They've tried to limit the amount of people in the office at all times, so that may have been why there was a bit of an accumulation of debris at the property, but that has been cleared up, and the painting should be done either this evening or sometime tomorrow. They took about half of it yesterday. They tried to rush as soon as possible to get someone in there to try to spruce the place up. The petitioners have experience in operating wine and malt beverage or convenience stores. They have liquor licenses in other areas as included in the application. They intend to hire an additional person if they get the beer and wine license. They've also made some other repairs to the exterior, including filling up some of the holes. There's some uneven pavement, they filled that up, and they want to continue to maintain the property and do whatever the planning board deems necessary to move forward with the liquor license.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this petition? No? Okay. Then, I have some letters that I need to read into the record. I think the members of the board have already received them through email, but I've been instructed to read them into the minutes. One of the letters comes from Inez Wan. "My name is Inez Wan. I reside at 81 Island Pond Road in Springfield. I have been living here for 21 years. I am totally opposed to the liquor license at 78 Island Pond Road, as we have enough noises with the car wash and noisy neighbors. This will bring intoxicated people and park in front of my home and driveway. Please do not issue this license." And she gives her phone number. She's 75 years old and retired from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The next one is from a Mr. Todd Hawkins. "My name is Todd Hawkins, and I live at 44 Agnes Street, Springfield. I've been here for 29 years. This is in regards to the application for a liquor license for the property of 78 Island Pond Road, formerly Murphy's Pop Shop. I would like to express my concerns with this particular location. We live in a density populated neighborhood with two small plazas, which includes a friendly mart, Walgreens, Nathan Bill's Lounge, Auto Zone, Rockies, Rent-A-Center, along with two banks that surround this property. This draws much pedestrian traffic. In addition to this, the PVTA now has a bus route that runs along Island Pond Road. There is a bus stop not 200 feet down from the street, down the street in the southbound direction from this business. This, along with all the traffic entering and exit Warehouse Street into the industrial park area. This location has eight parking spaces in the front of the building. Each space has less than two feet before crossing the sidewalk, with an additional five spaces which allows for approximately 30 feet. I have seen too many times people trying to exit this lot and cars on the road not yielding to the exiting vehicles. I have seen cars literally crossing the double lines in the road, so they would have to slow to allow the vehicle out. This business already has a convenience store and a restaurant exiting, existing here. With the influx of traffic, the liquor store will produce, I feel, it will put the public at an increased risk endangerment. We already have a liquor store two tenths of a mile away, along with three others with a two-mile radius. There is no need for this request to be approved. I thank you for giving me the chance to express my concerns." This is from the Board of Directors of the East Forest Park Civic Association. "They wish to bring to our attention the following objections to the package store request of this petitioner. One, for the past four and a half decades, it has been our policy to introduce ourselves to new business by visiting often and establishing a business partnership with them. They are invited to come to our, to one of our monthly meetings and introduce themselves through our membership to the community. Two, the East Forest Park Civic Association has held to the rule of asking the new variety store, pizza shop, or restaurant to get acquainted with the neighborhood over a two-year period, where we, our members and residents, become familiar with the establishment and its style of management. Three, we have been stopping in monthly at this location seeking to meet with the owner or manager. Those who work there have not assisted us with making contact. Four, we have not, we have noted that no improvements have been made to this property. The exterior has not been taken care of. Actually, now there are even more overgrown weeds, nor have there been any significant improvements to the interior. The inside has deteriorated even further with a variety of abandoned boxes and many odd items in open corners and other empty spaces. Five, even more disturbing to us, this new owner or the manager of Waffles and Wings has sought perhaps instigating a further source of income. One day permits to serve liquor to, on an evening or two, and has advertised out of state to Connecticut promoting the music event. Six, these indications of their management style causes us to seriously question the future intentions of this business seeking to open a package store and secure a liquor license. Seven, the location abutting our mini mall has been a very troubled area with assault incidents at Bank of America and Nathan Bill's and a murder at the corner of Island Pond Road and Overlook Drive in very recent years. But even more important, please note, this location has a very narrow front parking lot. Patrons will be backing out directly onto Island Pond Road, our most congested neighborhood area. It will be a place for accidents waiting to happen. The East Forest Park Civic Association's Board of Directors sees no need for a third package stores. Ours is a residential neighborhood. There are two package stores presently serving the needs of our residents. One is located on our western boundary, just around the corner, only two blocks away. It is Allen Package Store at 390 Allen Street. The other, on our eastern boundary, is one mile away, Eddie's Liquors at 896 Sumner Avenue. Therefore, we ask you to recognize that the creation of this package store in our East Forest Park neighborhood, excuse me, is totally inappropriate. That's the end of the letters I have to read on this particular item. I would like, I would like to point out a concern that I have, obviously, is, is the parking spaces that are going to have to go out into the street. But also, there's notice here that there's been advertising out of state promoting a music event. When was that? Is that happening, or has that had, happened?
They don't own the, as far as I know, that they, they don't own that chicken restaurant. Perhaps one of them can better elaborate. I'm not, I'm not aware of any music event. This was solely for the convenience store aspect, though. There is a restaurant.
Can I say something? I'm the owner of 78 Island Pond Road, and we own the convenience store. We don't know nothing about what's going on with the next door as a restaurant. So, we have, we don't know anything about he's promoting any music or, but I need to have word with him, and I will get back to you with that, because he didn't tell us that he's going to promote a music. We just lease the property to run as a restaurant, as a break place, that's it.
All right. Also, he's going to have some type of a music event there. He's going to need an entertainment license. He can't just do that.
Yes, I'll make sure that he gets that license, or he needs to talk to me first, whatever. He, to do.
All right. Does any of the board have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You, you said that you weren't the owner of the Waffle. I mean, it looks, I'm looking at GS right now, it looks like it's one, one property.
It's, there's a downstairs area, there's a basement, and that's leased out to a restaurant.
Downstairs?
Right, I believe so.
It's not really a basement, but there's a basement that we both can use it to put stuff, the extra stuff, but it's right next to it. It's not really a basement.
It's Rosemary. Two, two things. One is, I remember when it used to sell ice cream, and I used to go there and get soft-serve, and I know that the traffic going in and out is a nightmare. I haven't been there since, but the layout hasn't changed at all. It's, it was just accidents waiting to happen. But my other concern is the fact that they're cleaning it up now, when they want a license, doesn't give me a lot of sense of comfort. Obviously, there's not a lot of pride in the building, and there's not a lot of pride in the location. I'm, we're not looking for somebody who's going to run out and paint it because they need a, they need something from the city. It's something that should be done all along. There shouldn't be trash there. You know, COVID-19 doesn't cut it as far as an excuse. Businesses should be showing pride all along, not just when they're looking for a liquor license and coming before a board. So, I have a lot of, and obviously, so does the neighborhood. So, I just, the fact that they're cleaning it up now isn't weighing a whole lot on me, you know, as far as positive.
May I, may I interject, or is that okay?
That's all right, go ahead.
Um, so, they did purchase the property, I believe, last year. So, they're making incremental changes to the property. I did reach out to the neighborhood, the East Forest Park Community Association, and we did want to meet with them. COVID-19 kind of put a damper in making attempts to meet with them. I did communicate with them a little bit, and then I couldn't reach them anymore. And then after speaking with the liquor license authority, they said that we could move forward. But my clients would love to meet with the community and try to address some of these concerns. They'd also like to continue to make improvements in the property. They are very proud of this property. They want to provide some extra services. I do want to note that they are a convenience store first and foremost. This liquor, any liquor that's sold, it's, it's just a little bit extra. We're not talking about a brand-new liquor shop here. We're just talking about a few coolers in the back holding some, some beverages and perhaps a little bit of wine on display. We're not talking a full-blown liquor store. And my clients would certainly like to work with the community, show that they're improving the property. You know, we, we'd like to, to work with the planning board, you know, provide some extra services for the community. When they stop in there, they'll have the opportunity to buy wine and malt beverages if they so choose, but they are not going to just solely sell wine and malt beverages. This is just an accessory. And we can certainly come back and address some other concerns you have in terms of parking and that sort of thing, and perhaps talk about, you know, the day-to-day operations of the business. But we're, we're hoping that you don't just dismiss this. My clients recently purchased the building. They're trying to improve it. They're trying to, to do a good business, be a part of the community, and they'd really like your continued consideration. We'd very much like to work with the planning board and the neighborhood to address any concerns they may have.
Perhaps in the meantime...
Oops, sorry.
That's okay.
When did they actually buy it?
I can tell you in a second.
Hi, this is Tim Allen, City Councilor for that area, Springfield. I believe it was sold about spring of 19, somewhere around there. Maybe, maybe 15 months ago, if I'm right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
Perhaps in the meantime, before our next meeting, you can have an opportunity, you may not be able to meet with the East Springfield Civic Association, East Forest Park, excuse me, but perhaps have a conversation with the president.
Absolutely. We would very much like to do that. I did try to do that, so that we could try to initiate a conversation. We apologize, COVID-19 has made things a little bit difficult for us.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's been an hour, a year since he's owned it, so COVID-19's been the last several months.
In terms of contacting the civic association?
I would also like to note that in the letter that the East Forest Parks Civic Association provided, you know, to the planning board, that it looks like they have tried to make contact with the property owner who did, who did not, you know, tried to reciprocate, so. You know, another thing, you know, on behalf of the Department of Public Works, you know, safety in terms of transportation is something that that we're greatly concerned with at this location. It's in specific, the parking along the front edge of Island Pond Road, and I think something that needs to be addressed in the event that the liquor license would be granted, so.
Thank you, Luca, for bringing that up, because that was my next suggestion, to look at alternatives to parking in that front. That, that's a big concern for the neighborhood, and I don't blame them for that, especially with cars coming out, having to back out into Island Pond Road. It's, it's dangerous. Can you, in the one month that you have, look around and see, is there an alternative to the parking?
Certainly can. I, 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 we'll look and see what we can do with that. I know that there is space behind. Perhaps we can talk with some engineers to get some recommendations on the parking.
Okay. Is anybody else from the board, Leo?
Just a question. If they're going to be selling individual cans of beer, what kind of like oversight or security would you have to make sure it's not, somebody goes in, buys a can of beer, comes out, sits in their car, and drinks it before they even leave? Who's going to be sort of overseeing what's happening on the property? Because you don't want to have someone go in, it's 100 degrees outside, buy a beer, start drinking it in the car, and pull out into the street, which we all know is a very, very busy road. So, do they already have a plan in terms of how they're going to monitor? You know, that type of thing?
I believe they're going to use the same system that they have at their other stores. I can perhaps get that in writing from them. I know they're here now, they can probably speak to that, what they do at their other stores where they have a liquor license, but if you'd like something in writing, some kind of a plan, that might be a good way to go, and we can certainly try to provide that for you.
That would be helpful, thank you. Where are there others?
I'm seeing... I'm here. So, we're going to put cameras, we're going to put all kinds of signs that people can read it, we can see it from inside a store, and make sure that they don't drink on the property or in a car, so we'll make sure.
I think you've got some homework to do before, I know, before I'd be comfortable, so.
Absolutely. We have no, we want to address all your concerns, absolutely.
We have parking in the back.
There is parking in the back?
Yeah, big parking there.
Okay. You'll need to perhaps have a look at that. Also, where are your other stores?
Almost like 10 car parks there on the back side.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's like 10 car parking on the back side. You can see that, you know, like when you go in a parking lot.
Okay.
If you use the back parking, it's very good, it's a good lot, big lots. You know, you cannot even see anybody's property on the back side, you know, so.
And where are your other properties?
No, it's the same properties there, you know, that's...
No, no, no. Liquor licenses.
Where?
What other stores do you have? That's what he's trying to ask.
Okay, we have one in Seacare, we have in Townton, couple, we have in Abington. No, no, not Abington, what's called, Trembuk. So...
Trembuk, Brockton.
Brockton.
So, this is your first store here in the Pioneer Valley?
Yes, Springfield, yeah.
Okay, and who's going to be manager of this, of the store? And the manager, if this license goes through?
That's going to be under me.
Ready, but...
And what will your hours be at the store?
So, my hours, because I do have a smoke shop and stuff in Fall River, so I do go back and forth of Springfield and Fall River. So, I am there now the full-time, but I do have employee that's full-time, husband and wife. They work there, and I do go there to manage every few days.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gloria?
Yes?
Since there are other places with liquor license aren't local, there's no way we can take a look and see what they're like? If there's any way that we can get documentation on what their other locations are like? I mean, I'm not impressed with what we're seeing here, so I'm curious as to what their other places are like. It's not local.
Is there any way we can send out a pictures or take a video and, you know, hand it to you guys, so you'll be able to see how it looks like?
That would be good, if you send it to the planning department, Alvin or Phil Dromi?
That's fine.
Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you. Does it, do any of the other planning board members have any other questions? If there are no other questions, then I will accept a motion to table this petition until next month.
I'll make a motion, it's Jen, to table this petition until next month.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Luca, thank you. Alvin, if you would read the roll call, please.
Okay, Martin Cunningham?
Yes. Luca?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Rosemary Moran?
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo?
Yes.
Leo Florian?
Yes.
Jennifer McQuade?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is tabled until next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria, before the petitioners go, did you guys want to get the addresses of those other locations?
They are on the application.
They're all on that. Okay.
I can certainly send them. I have Mr. Allen's email address. I can certainly send the address to him directly as well.
Okay, I appreciate it.
You're going to send the application of the, of the addresses of the other businesses?
Yes, they are included in the application, and I'm going to send, I'll, I'll send an email to Mr. Allen, including the other addresses, so it's all clear for you.
Okay, yeah, because what we have does not have the addresses.
Gotcha, I will send those to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alan, can you read, Alvin, can you read the next?
Yeah, the next item, second item, under public hearings, new items, beer and wine, liquor license, new, location 1500 Main Street, petitioner Hot Table MA LLC, doing business as Hot Table.
Is there someone here to speak on that?
Hi there, yes, that's me, John DeVoy, I'm president and co-owner of Hot Table, and I want to thank you for having me tonight to speak in favor of our liquor license. We've been in downtown Springfield for 11 years. Our very first store is up in the 16 Acres neighborhood in Springfield, that was our first store, we now have seven total. We have a headquarters, our company headquarters, all seven of our locations actually is in downtown Springfield, so we are a proud members of the Springfield community. So we would just like to enhance our offering to our guests by offering them bottled beer or bottled wine on a limited basis.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to, let's see, no. Okay, any of the board members have any questions?
Pretty cut and dry.
Yep. I've been to your 16...
I work downtown and go there, well, when I was working downtown, used to go to lunch there all the time, it was always great, you know?
Oh, thank you, we appreciate that.
Yeah, the food was good, it has a, you know, great vibe, or even before hockey, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, never any issues being there, never any issues, you know, in the place, it's always been fine.
Yeah. Yeah, we just finished up a pretty extensive renovation, or actually right in the middle of COVID. We did pause it for a little bit, but we just completely redid the store to bring it up to our current brand standards. All of our newer stores, which are out in central and eastern Massachusetts, are kind of have our new design, so we wanted to bring that back home to Springfield, so if you're downtown, you can stop in and see what we've done down there, so.
And I just want to be sure of the hours, Monday through Friday, 11 till 8:00 p.m., Saturday, 11 till 6:00 p.m., and you are closed on Sundays?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, just for, we've had requests in the past, and we're kind of testing it out to see if it may work in some of our other stores. Just someone, if you want to have a bottle of beer or wine with their panetti, kind of thing, it's, there's going to be no taps, there's going to be a cooler behind the register, kind of like when you go into Chipotle and you want to get a Dos Equis or something, just grab a beer with your sandwich, that kind of thing, so.
But you will not be selling just the beer, and somebody can buy it and walk out?
No.
Okay. Just want to make that clear.
Yep.
Okay. All right, if there are no other questions from Leo, did you want to say something?
Just in the people serving and working in the place, we'll all be educated on how to deal with serving alcohol.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will be going through that process of making sure everybody is brought up to speed and educated, just like we do with all of our food handling practices, you know, everything. This is also kind of a test for us. I mean, we're, our headquarters is right on the 23rd floor, so I'm actually in that store quite often.
Yep.
Kind of overseeing it, so.
Is this the first one you're going to be serving beer and wine in?
Yes.
So we're a test, okay.
Yes. Yep.
All right, then I will accept a motion to table this hearing until next month.
Motion to table it.
Second.
Motion to continue, a motion to continue, not...
Continue, sorry, that, sorry, motion to continue.
Still a motion to continue.
Alvin, if you would do the roll, roll call.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, Martin Cunningham?
Yes.
Luca Minio?
Yes.
Rosemary Moran?
Yes.
Gloria De Filippo?
Yes.
Leo Florian?
Yes.
Jennifer McQuaid?
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alvin, if you would read our next petition?
Okay. The next petition, a public hearing, new item, alteration expansion of premise, location 911, also known as 5 Remen Avenue, petitioner City Line Capital Incorporated, doing business as City Line.
Good afternoon, I'm attorney Thomas Rook on behalf of City Line Cafe Inc., and its owner Martin Cunningham. Pursuant to master general laws, I want to disclose that Martin is a member of the Springfield Planning Board, and I have advised him to excuse himself in this room, and have no participation in this meeting whatsoever.
Thank you.
I'm asking him ready to leave. So this petition is to add a patio to the rear of the building. This has been a neighborhood bar for over 60 years, I was born and raised in that neighborhood, and as a younger man, I was a frequent patron on a socially responsible basis, and Martin has owned it for several years now, and I would say, based upon the letters that you have received, he is an on-hands manager, he's here every morning and every night after work, he's a very responsible person. I have submitted a list of over 90 signatures of residents of Springfield, most of them from the neighborhood who are in support of the petition. I have also submitted a couple letters from neighbors who are within 25 to 50 yards of the City Line Cafe, and last night, we had a meeting with the Hungry Hill Civic Association, and they voted to unanimously endorse it, and three of those individual members have submitted letters to the planning board, personal letters on behalf of their support in citing specific reasons, because Martin is a very good manager, he's very concerned with the neighborhood. Of most importance, I would ask board members to consider, I also submitted, and I hope you have received and had an opportunity to review, Springfield Police Department records going back five years, and if you look at all of those calls relative to the City Line, you will see probably 95% of them are the result of the alarm system going off. There is not one single call to the police department from any neighbors complaining about excessive noise. So there were two letters from a immediate abutter, and another neighbor five houses down the street, who's complained extensively in their letter about this excessive noise that they hear constantly, and they're in strong opposition to this petition. I would suggest and advise or recommend to you that if the neighbors were that concerned about this excessive noise over the last five years, at least once, they would have picked up the phone and called the Springfield Police Department. And if you look at the records from the Springfield Police Department, there is not one single call for excessive noise, so I would suggest to you that their letters lack evidence of excessive noise. I sent pictures late this afternoon, and I'm not sure if Alvin had an opportunity to receive them and forward them to you, of the patio area. The patio area is 32 feet by 16 feet, and there is a large shed, 16 feet by 10 feet, that is between the immediate abutter who complained. That shed is fully insulated on all walls, as well as the ceiling, it's a seven-foot tall shed with a pointed roof on it, there's also a stockade fence behind it that runs the length of the 32 feet where the proposed patio is. I would suggest to you that that shed and the stockade fence are going to minimize any voice noise that you're going to hear. There will be no live music, there will be no audio music, there will be no amplified music on the deck. So if you drive along the Mass Pike and you see those barriers in Ludlow spreading the Mass Pike from the residents behind it, it's because those barriers prove effective in minimizing noise. I would suggest to you that the patio, as well as the stockade fence, serve a similar purpose in minimizing the noise. Based upon those foregoing reasons and the over 90 signatures that were submitted, I urge you to adopt and recommend approval for this petition. We have read the recommendations of your planning department, we have no opposition to them whatsoever, they're recommending an 11:00, 8:00, 11:00 p.m. closing time on the patio, and we have no opposition to that at all, or any other, any other, any other, other recommendations. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Attorney Rook, how many tables, I drove by there this afternoon, but I didn't count the tables. How many tables are out there?
I believe they're planning on having four tables.
Four, okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
One other thing that I did not mention, the owner of the property, Russ Omer, who owns Russ's restaurant right next door, recently purchased a home behind the property, he demolished the home, and there's an expansive parking lot there. So if there's any issues about parking in front of the City Line or on Remen Avenue, since Russ purchased that property and built a parking lot, those concerns are eradicated, they're non-existent today.
Okay. In regards to the, to the noise and the fact that neighbors, there are no calls on record that neighbors have about making the calls about the noise, it was a long about way of saying that. I will just use as a caution that at night, the noise tends to travel, and they could be talking about people leaving the bar and the noise that generates there, so if the owners would be cognizant of the fact, and hopefully express to their patrons that you are in a neighborhood, leave as quietly as possible. And having experienced this over a number of years, and made several calls to police department within my own area, that's what I would say as a word of caution to you.
Martin has signs on the exit ways, specifically asking patrons to be respectful of their neighbors, and please keep the noise to a minimum.
Thank you.
But I will advise him again to reemphasize that to his employees, and stress to the patrons personally when they're preparing to leave.
Okay. Do any board members have any other, have any questions, I should say?
The four tables you mentioned, is that because of COVID, or is that all that fits in there? So what I'm concerned about is there are four tables now, because they have to be so far apart, and it's going to change to eight tables once the restrictions ease up, or is four tables all that fits there?
I was here last night for the first time since the patio was built, and four tables look max where they can put there.
Okay.
I don't see them, maybe, maybe one other table, but certainly not more than five.
And these are tables for four?
I'm sorry?
These are tables for four, four at each table? Four chairs?
I'm not understanding the question, I'm sorry.
The tables, are they tables for four, or they're not tables for six or eight?
Tables for four, yes.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll read the letters that the planning board has received. "The Hungry Hill Neighborhood Board has agreed to support the alteration expansion of premises for an all-alcohol license expansion at 911 Remen Avenue. It is our understanding that this is for the patio in the rear of the City Line Cafe. The council is in support of the request and is in agreement with the planning department's recommendation that the patio be closed at 11:00 p.m., as well as the additional conditions. As this is a land-based issue before this board, we request that the property be maintained with respect to litter and debris. In addition, we ask that they be mindful of loitering and noise as it is a quality-of-life issue that can affect the abutting residential area. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Catherine Mossy, as the president of the council, of the Hungry Hill Council." This is from Max Skorsky at 35 Remen Avenue in Springfield. "This is Max Skorsky, and my brother Thomas and I own the house at 35 Remen Avenue in Springfield, where my mother current resides. The property has been in my family's possession since 1950. My brother and I were born and raised here, and we continue to actively involve, to be actively involved in managing this property, as well as maintaining a strong interest in the Glenwood Atwater neighborhood. The neighborhood has changed significantly over the years. I remember very well when the City Line and Glenwood Cafe, now closed, were the local neighborhood pubs where friends and neighbors would gather over a brew to catch up with the local gossip or watch a sporting event on TV. This appears to be less so as the neighborhood has become more diverse and younger, as people my age have moved away and our parents have died. As a result of this gentrification, we have seen an increase in the number of out-of-towners who patronize the City Line Cafe. It is not uncommon to see cars with Connecticut plates parked along Remen Avenue. In essence, their patrons come from all over western Massachusetts and Connecticut. When the City Line sponsors trips to sporting events, it creates a parking nightmare for the residents on Remen. Cars will be parked on both sides of the street, which directly impacts the flow of traffic. The Springfield side of Remen is much narrower than the Chicopee side, so it doesn't really allow for parking on both sides of the street. Additionally, we have frequently found empty beer bottles on our lawns after these events, as well as other trash coming from the cafe. I am very much opposed to City Line's expansion plans to add an outside patio area. I am five houses down from the bar, and even without a patio, the current patrons can be heard from my house when there is a large crowd and they start drinking to access. I would like to remind the board that Glenwood is primarily a residential area. There, there are many young families living here now with school-aged children, as well as elderly residents like my mother, who call this neighborhood home. The City Line Cafe has been a relatively good neighbor for much of the 70 years... Excuse me. For much of the 70 years that my family has lived here, and I would hate to see it leave as a neighborhood institution. Sorry about that, I hit my screen and it went off. "Despite some of the inconveniences that the residents have had to endure, adding a patio is going above and beyond what is tolerable. It is the owners of the cafe who would like to expand, they should consider moving to a new location, perhaps the former Glenwood Cafe on Springfield Street, also at Glenwood Circle, which is surrounded by woods on two sides and a gas station on the other. I hope you find this information helpful, please feel free to call me if you have any further questions." Okay. And I think that's the last one, that's the last one I have.
Chairman, Chairwoman, there are three other letters, there's one from Mary Ellen O'Brien, which you can read between now and your meeting next month, there's one from Jim O'Connor.
I'll read some of the other letters that we have.
Okay, thank you.
All right. "Good afternoon, Mr. Allen. This message is to express my support for the additional patio use at the City Line Cafe. I've been a resident of Glenwood neighborhood for over 60 years and own two properties within close proximity to the pub. The management of this pub has changed many times over these past 60 years, but I can say with authority that these past few years, under the control of Mr. Cunningham, it has been, it has never been more well-managed. As a neighbor and property owner in Hungry Hill, Martin has, Martin is very hands-on. He is on-site almost every evening to keep an eye..." He is on-site almost every evening to keep an eye on the place and keep it impeccably maintained. He's also there every morning to do the necessary deep cleaning that the current situation requires. The recent improvements to the facility are a clear indication of his commitment to operating a first-class establishment. We are pleased to offer our full support to Mr. Cunningham and, and his very competent staff. Mr. Jim O'Connor of sixty-seven seventy-three David Street, Springfield. Okay. I have another letter from Miss Mary O'Brien. Dear Mr. Allen, I am corresponding with you today to express my support for the City Line Cafe's petition for approval for outside dining. The newly renovated patio area offers a small outside area for patrons to be able to enjoy a bite to eat and drink. The addition of a fully insulated, insulated storage structure and a new stockade fence effectively, effectively minimizes any noise that might emanate from the area and a new and spacious parking lot in back has eliminated much of the parking issues that at one time would have affected the Remen Avenue. As far as noise goes, with the exception of one or two nights a year, there is no live music. There, there is no live music there. And if there is, it is inside. This patio area is of a size that music will not be feasible. It should be noted that this establishment has in fact been at this location longer than any of the occupying households around it. The owner of the City Line is someone who has not only grown up in the neighborhood, but actually still lives there, as do I. And to have a business owner to be able to say that in Springfield today, to me is admirable, to say the least. Mr. Cunningham is a responsible, present and conscientious business owner. He has invested great significantly financial, significant financial resources into the physical building. It is a clean, safe neighborhood gathering place. In these difficult times that offer such economic trials to small business owners, it would certainly behoove, behoove the city's administrative boards to support a request such as this that will enable a business to stay operating and sold. Thank you for taking the time to consider my thoughts. Miss Mary O'Brien, Mary O'Brien of one oh nine Sterling Street, Springfield. Also have a letter from Miss Karen Spindler. I own my own home at forty-five Remen Ave, Springfield, Mass. I have never had a problem with any excessive noise or disturbance or parking issues concerning the City Line establishment. They are good neighbors and a friendly and a friendly meeting place. That is Miss Karen Spindler, forty-five Remen Ave, Springfield.
Thank you, Alvin. Are there any others?
I have one last letter.
Okay.
All right, to the Springfield Planning Board. We are writing today to voice our concerns over the application for the City Line Capital Incorporated doing business at City Line to obtain a permanent outdoor liquor license for the patio that directly abuts our residential home located at fifteen Remen Avenue. Our biggest concern and objection to this license is that the outdoor patio is located approximately twenty feet from our home. Due to this fact, there will be many negative impacts that will be detrimental to our quality of life as we are, as we are the neighbor that will be impacted the most. We do not believe it is appropriate to allow patrons, especially ones who have been consuming alcohol, to congregate outside just twenty feet away from our home at, at all hours of the night. Our quality of life will certainly be negatively impacted by the loud noise and foul language that will be produced. Prior to COVID nineteen, we have witnessed the patrons drinking outside on the patio. And while we have made complaints in the past, those have never been addressed. Their connections to City Hall allow them to run their business however they'd like, with no regard to their neighbors. We feel that this shows how the tax-paying residents are given no consideration, especially in this circumstance where this business is in such close proximity to our home. We have reviewed the recommendations given by the East, East Springfield Neighborhood Council. I'm not sure if they're referring to Hungry Hill, but their recommendations state that due to the close proximity of residential butter, the staff would recommend that this area not be allowed to stay open any louder than eleven P M. We feel that even eleven P M is excessive. If you reference the City of Springfield Noise Ordinance, Chapter two fifty-nine, Section seven, Creation of Noise at Night, it states, "It shall be unlawful for any person in charge of any store, garage, filling station, apartment, house, theater, restaurant, bar, or other premises where persons gather or enter for purposes of amusement or trade within the city, either by his or her own actions or by permitting or allowing any persons who may resort to his or her premises to disturb the neighbors or public peace by loud noises, boisterous voices, I'm sorry, boisterous voices, operation of musical equipment, machines, instruments, or other musical devices, the use of which produces noise plainly audible at a distance of two hundred feet, interrupting the peace required of the city after the hour of ten P M and before the hour of eight, eight A M." As you can see, we fall well within those parameters as we are just twenty feet away. Allowing patrons to consume alcohol outside of, on the patio this close to our home will clearly violate the city noise ordinance that is already in place. We hope that our voice will be heard and this letter will be taken seriously. We don't think our concerns are unreasonable, and we believe that this permanent license should not be granted. Please put yourselves in our shoes and think about how our lives will be negatively impacted by loud intoxicated patrons gathering just feet from our home every night. Thank you for taking the time to read our concerns. We hope that they will be considered. Gail and Les McCray.
Thank you.
Yep.
If I could just respond very briefly.
Go ahead.
The last letter that was read by the immediate butter states he's twenty feet away. I provided a Google map to Alvin. It shows he's actually forty-one feet away. And again, Madam Chairwoman, you've stated previously just earlier that you called the police on numerous occasions because of noise in your neighborhood. And this homeowner has never called the Springfield Police once. So I just ask you to take that into consideration when you're making your deliberations and taking this matter into consideration.
Thank you.
If you're time.
Do any board members have any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Attorney Rook. So the hours of operation, it would be two eleven P M for the patio?
They are, they are agreeing to close the patio at eleven P M. But the liquor license permits them to stay open until two A M. And that would be a your recommendation, which would be passed on to the License Commission and imposed by the licensee. The License Commission would impose a restriction that the patio could not be accessed eleven P M.
And did the area that they're looking to have the patio, was, was there any pre-existing use? Were people occupying that during the bar hours previous to it, or?
No, it was not. Persons, persons might smoke out there, but alcohol was not allowed out there. But most of the persons from my observation, smoke in front of the establishment.
Okay, thank you.
As far as twenty or forty feet, to be honest with you, I'm sure at night and there's noise. That's not, that's not a big difference, you know? It's sort of nitpicking, saying, oh, they're forty, not twenty feet. Would you consider closing at a ten o'clock based on the whole noise? Regulations seem to not be an unreasonable request.
Can you repeat that, please?
Would you consider changing the hours till ten o'clock? I mean, based on what I'm reading as far as the noise ordinance? You know, and some people do go to bed early, you know? I mean, would you consider ten o'clock instead of eleven o'clock? For closing the patio?
No, we think, we think eleven o'clock is reasonable as recommended by your planning department. We're professionals in this field. It's a reasonable recommendation.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just have one quick question. For Attorney Rook. Seeing that this is going to be new, obviously. I, I know the area. And it's, it's a bar in the middle of a neighborhood. It's been there for many, many years. And this is going to be something new. And I was, and obviously all of the previous calls or no calls to the police, well, that was when there was no drinking outside. So now this opens up a whole new, a whole new thing here. Is, is Mr. Cunningham sort of like prepared? Because I'm sure, I mean, he's a smart guy. He doesn't want to have trouble with the neighbors. How does he plan to now, because there's an expansion here? In terms of like, I mean, any bar that there is where there's alcohol, there's times where there's problems. And I don't know how he deals with them now, but will he be prepared to deal with this additional area that he has to cover? You know, especially at the beginning, to make sure that things don't get out of hand and he sets the tone right from the beginning. You know, and let the neighbors see that we're not going to put up with any nonsense. You know, this is here for convenience for our customers, and that's it. And we don't want any problems. So would he have any kind of like additional help just to make sure that nothing happens out there?
Look, it's a, as you stated, it's a neighborhood bar that's been there for over sixty years. Ninety-five percent of the patrons are in the neighborhood. So the individual who wrote the letter stating that there are numerous cars from Connecticut. I don't see it. And I asked Marty about it, and he said, Tom, he said, you know what this is? It's a neighborhood bar. So being personally acquainted with ninety-five percent of the patrons and the other five percent that may come in, they're with the neighborhood person. So it's neighbors monitoring and supervising each other. And if someone starts to get out of hand, someone else steps in and they, you know, back it off. So Marty will reinforce that. As I said, he knows every single patron, ninety-five percent of the patrons by first names. He knows their families, he knows their histories. So they're not likely to cross hairs with him because they'll be burned. So I think that's, everyone will be self-policing one another with respect to being on that patio. And knowing that, okay, they're out there having a smoke, we're enjoying a smoke. They're having a beer where you can have that smoke. Keep your mouths quiet.
Okay.
How, that brings up a good question, though, Leo. How is he going to monitor the outside patio? Is he going to have a closed-circuit television, a camera? Somebody going to be out there as a, a waitstaff?
I haven't discussed that with him, but I'll go back to what I just answered. Patients will be policing one another. And if it becomes necessary to install an outside camera, Marty's not Marty's not opposed to Marty's not opposed to enhancing security and complying. And most, most importantly, I would ask you to keep in mind, if you vote in support of this petition, and it goes before the License Commission, and there are violations, or neighbors do call and complain and complain. The License Commission has the authority to pull them back before him for a violation of the licensing laws and trim his hours or revoke his permit to have that outside patio. So there's an incentive for him and his fellow patrons, who are all personal friends, to police one another and be smart. Because the License Commission has the ultimate authority. Regardless of what this planning board does, in the future, six months down the road, they can bring them in on a violation, say, okay, you know what? We've got six complaints, we're closing the patio. And that would not be a good business move for Marty to allow, to allow to happen. And I think he's smarter than that, knowing him for the last thirty-five years.
I, I personally would not rather go into this saying, I'm expecting my patrons to police each other. That's not an answer to me. I want to know what the owner's going to do. It's not the patrons' jobs to police each other. I'd rather have something in place beforehand rather than say, well, we're just going to wait and see, and if it's a problem, then we're going to deal with it. I'd rather take a proactive position with something than an active after the fact, you know? I mean, it just makes more sense to me to be proactive.
He generally has two bartenders on at the same time. So I can assure you that one of those bartenders will be going out there on a very, very regular basis. It's not like they're not going to go out there for the entire evening. They'll probably be going out there, and I'll recommend to Marty that he have them go out there at least every fifteen minutes to monitor what's going on out there.
Yeah, and I also think, I'm sorry, I also think it's valid to ask how the patio is going to operate. I know that you, that you, you don't know the answer to that, whether, you know, someone comes in and requests to sit at the patio, and then they have a server come and bring them food and beverages and so on. But I do think that's an answer that the board needs.
Yeah, I'd like more answers than just, who's probably going to do this, or maybe he'll do this. I think I'd like to see some kind of plan when you come back next month.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Rosemary.
I just, Jen, I just had, I know that we've granted other outdoor patios, so I don't know what the time was for them. Like Nathan Bells is in a neighborhood, and Al Phil Patty's was granted a patio. So I think that if they were granted to eleven, it makes sense to be consistent as far as what our recommendations are.
Yes, but for both, and I absolutely agree with you, Jennifer, but it's because of the location and the neighborhood right there that we're being, I think, just a little bit more cautious and asking for just a couple of more assurances. If there are no other questions from the board, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Thank you, Lutha, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Martin, I'm sorry. Martin Cunningham will abstain. Luca Minio?
Yes.
Rosemary Moran?
Yes.
Gloria Di Filippo?
Yes.
Leo Florian?
Yes.
Jennifer McQuaid?
Yeah. Yeah.
The motion is continued to next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvin, we have any non subs?
We do, I'm going to do a screen share.
Okay.
So give me just a moment. You guys see this okay?
Yes.
Signal Hill Circle, Signal Hill Circle. This is located in the East Forest Park neighborhood. They are simply So this is currently one whole lot. And they're just going to put this, if you can see this solid line here. It's going to put a line down the middle, so it's going to go from one single lot to two lots.
Will that second lot still be buildable?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
I second.
Do we have to do roll call, or can we just say?
Alvin, I, I just, I have one question here.
Sure.
So parcel eight is going to be a new parcel now? So parcel eight is going to be a new parcel now?
Uh, yes, but it already has a, a structure on it.
Oh, there's our, and the property line runs through, is that a shared driveway?
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
It looks like a, they would have to do some sort of easement or something.
And you said there is.
Is it a driveway or a house? Is that a driveway or a house?
The house is here. Can you see where the hand is?
Okay. All right.
And then the driveway is down here and it looks like the driveway does cut a little bit into the, the other parcel. So I'm not sure if it's something where they require another, or require an easement or if they'll kind of, you know, take a little bit of that parking space back and they'll create a new curb cut. I'm not sure.
And, and obviously, the, so the, the property, the proponent is probably, probably looking to sell parcel B.
I, I guess so. I'm not sure, but.
And I guess it'll be his problem for when he does. I don't know.
All right. If we, we'll just do a roll call. We won't do a roll call vote. All those in favor? Either thumbs up or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Alvin, is there another one?
Yes, we have three more.
Oh, oh, yeah. Now I see.
So this is a lot on the intersection of Liberty Street and Phoenix Street. Currently, it's one lot. I'm sorry, it's, I think it's four. Yeah, it's, it's four separate lots. So three lots along Liberty Street and one at the corner of Phoenix. They're going to combine to be one whole lot. So basically, so four to one.
Just in, just so, a little background on these parcels. This parcel's the home of a future Dunkin' Donuts. The site plan was reviewed and approved by the DPW, I think, a couple of years ago.
Okay. Motion to approve.
So it's the three lots and the one to the back or to the side?
Yes, I think this one's a man-like parcel.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Third one.
Third one, okay. So this, all right, so basically, it's two separate lots. One is at the intersection of Ballard Street and Birchland Ave. One is exclusively on Birchland Ave. But they're basically, the lot line is currently here, if you see where my arrow is. And they're just going to move the lot line to the south. Therefore, to create more space on this lot, to create another buildable lot.
Weird.
What a weird lot line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it did it just so that this property would have enough square footage. Because I think they need exactly 7,500. So they just made it with, with this funky line here.
Okay. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
I'll make a, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Alvin, number four, please.
Okay, so the, the last plan, it's actually, I'll have to zoom in a little bit. So it's, all right, so you have.
Oh, much better.
Yes. So at the intersection of Thompson and State Street, you have this Pride Gas Station, just so you know where the location is, so you understand that.
Yes.
So behind the Pride Gas Station is a larger lot, which is Lot A2. Lot A2 is currently, if you kind of see where my, where I'm scrolling here, this is what the current, present day A2 consists of. So they're going to give up the portion of, of basically a southern portion of the lot, they're going to split it up and give it, and create Lot B. Lot B is going to be consolidated into the Pride Gas Station lot on the corner.
That's where they're putting their parking, right?
Uh, that, maybe so, I'm not sure.
If I remember from when they came before us, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so Lot A2 is going to split off Lot B and Lot B is going to be consolidated into the Pride Gas Station lot. But then there's a northern portion here that Lot A2 is going to give up to Lot A1 to, to make Lot A1 bigger. So I don't know if that makes A1 then a buildable lot. I'm not sure why they, why they giving up that portion, but. So it's a portion to the north and a portion to the south that are going to break off from Lot A2 along Thompson Street. And this is in the McKnight neighborhood.
Okay. You have a motion? Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next meeting.
One question, one question, Gloria, before we go?
Yes.
When, when the hearing was on about Allen Pond Road and you have people, I know the attorney was on screen when we could see her. But when the owners or the petitioners that want to speak in favor of this, I'd like to see them on screen. Is there any way we can request that if you're going to speak in favor of a petition, that you're on screen? Because they were bouncing back and forth. It was hard to follow. And I didn't understand some of the things they were saying. But maybe if I, I'm watching them speak, it would be a little easier. So I don't think that's too much of a request to just say, you know, let us see where you are.
I think if we're going to request it, we need to make it going forward to everybody. It's not a bad request.
I'm not sure we can enforce that, but I can certainly ask.
Okay.
Well, they, they can say no, but, well, they can say no, but they should. I don't know why they would.
Right.
And I'm always, I'm always on video, but not today. I'm on vacation and I came on so there would be a quorum. So that's the only reason I'm not. I just came off the beach.
No, that's fine, Jennifer. Well, Jen.
Then you didn't want us to see you on the beach because we'd be jealous?
No, no.
But one of them was on camera for a short period of time, got out of the car. So they could do it.
Okay.
They could do it.
Look, I took the request.
We'll ask and see what happens.
They may just have the video shut off. They could just have the stop video on, you know? It could be as simple as that.
All right, our next meeting is August 19th. I believe it's going to be a Zoom meeting again. So I don't have the final word on that. So I will accept a motion to adjourn.[1790.50]